I think we will.
I want you to know, Mr. President, I have the flag for us.
I would like to have a moment of silence for George Floyd and for every victim of violence across this country at the hands of police. And for healing for our country.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
I don't know if I'm unmuted here. I can't hear you guys unless somebody is talking. We have what Rose repository or nothing was sent in?
No.
That brings us to citizens to be heard. We're going to see if Frank here is ready for that segment of our meeting this morning.
So the first citizen to be heard would be Walt Sermet if he is on. And I don't see him being on. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go with the hand, hand raise if that's okay.
Should there be pictures on our phone?
Okay, so Randy Barnes is currently coming on.
Hey, hey, thank you. Can I be heard by anyone?
Yeah, we hear you.
All right. Very good. Hey, I appreciate the time today. And boy, what a change our lives have taken, our world has taken in the past since our last council meeting. And I don't think there's any of us who could deny that what we saw just over a week ago was murder. And I think we could also define it as torture, because I think when you kill someone slowly with intent, I would say that's torture. That's just a terrible thing we have to witness. And I'm afraid that we're being shown it so often on TV that we're desensitizing our children, our youth to this violence. I don't think any of us can ever forget that, that image in our mind. With that being said, we have to control our streets. There's nothing that can be done in society without controlling our streets. I protested, started protesting 13 years ago, and never once did we tell anyone we're with to make sure you bring your fireworks. Make sure you bring your frozen bottles of water, because they can be used as bricks. And we use these to try to harm the police officers who are trying to restore order. We are intent on causing chaos. That's what we saw the other night. We saw chaos. We saw people with intent. And we can blame these outsiders for coming in here, but I can't blame my neighbor for my actions if my actions are bad. I can't blame my neighbor. I can't blame somebody down the road. My actions are my actions. I have to be responsible and answer to my actions. I was greatly disturbed that within a short few hours, this, I want to call her pushover, the pushover person. Because I've been pushed harder coming out of elevators and high rises than what it took to push this girl over. She was pushed over an officer's foot. And I'm no, I'm no training, I'm no a police expert, but I gotta believe that they are trained to push people with their, was not kicked. I've seen football games. I know what a kickoff is. I know what a extra point is. And I know what a soccer kick is. I know what a kick is, and I know what a push is with a foot. So within 24 hours, pushovers on TV, not showing any bruises, not showing anything worse for wear, not showing a hospital report, but telling us that she was disobeying the officers. She admitted within 10 seconds she was disobeying the officers. She was creating a barrier so these people down the street could create violence and break windows. She was the barrier. That's the only reason people lying in the street, because police are not allowed to pass that line. Those people, those people could turn around and shoot them in the back. They don't pass a line of protesters. She chose to sit there, fireworks going over her head, mace being threatened. All her friends get up and leave, and she makes the point of sitting there. I want to say this probably wasn't her first rodeo. He told, she came down there two hours after the protest rally, peaceful one started. She came two hours later. It bothers me a lot. And it bothered me a lot. And we can take all the time we want at the end of council and talk about our political beliefs. I think you should take five minutes for the citizens' work and five minutes for your political beliefs. Because when I call 911, it goes up to Oliver Road. It doesn't go to Harrisburg. It doesn't go to Washington. And this whole deal with the photo op, knocking our president, you can knock him all you want, but that's not what you're elected to do during council meetings. He walked across the lawn that the night before was in a total riot. People had fires. He proved that he wanted to clear those people, he could clear them if they didn't want to clear. And he walked across the street. That's no different than a council person sitting there with the cross behind him in the picture. It's a photo op. It's a photo op. It's a photo op. And you can deny the, I think he's immoral. I don't care for him. I wouldn't want him to be my brother-in-law. But he's a leader of the country. He's got to restore order. He's given the governors the opportunity, call out the National Guard. We are in an insurrection right now. When I see teenagers with skateboards, breaking windows, breaking cop car windows, that's not a protest. That's not, that's not going to change any laws. That's going to make the cops more hardened. It's a proven fact that... Do you understand where I'm coming from? We either need to find out what this pushover was about, get her cell phone records, get her internet records, find out who she's connected with. This may go three or four levels up. We may break this pattern of violence. This was organized. Do you understand? This was organized. These cops 24 hours before, did any one of these cops 24 hours before that, when they went to bed, thought they were going to be faced with fireworks? If I come down to City Hall right now and sit in the street, and you have to walk across the street to get into your car today, how many fireworks can I throw at you? Because I need to know. Can I throw one? No, I can't throw any fireworks at you. But we expect these officers to put their life on the line to protect people like this pushover on all those rioters and to protect people in the Richford Arms. Those people could have walked into Richford Arms, blocked the elevators on the first floor, and set fire to the building. That's what the row of protesters sitting there are to do. They are to delay, delay, delay the officers. The officers' important work to keep the city of this riotous people. That entire downtown, half those buildings are over 100 years old. Wooden is 150 years old. They're so fragile and tender. And we're telling them, and the mayor gets on TV and says, the girl didn't do anything wrong. We need leadership. Need it from everyone that has a voice. We need leadership. We don't have time to criticize. Even though I'm criticizing, I'm hoping this is constructive criticism. And how much more time do I have, Councilman?
None.
Pardon me?
You're, you're timed up.
I thank you. You just had to...
I think you got a bone somewhere there. I don't know what...
Council President?
Yes, sir.
I hope we made a point, because that last weekend cost the city over $100,000. Add it up. Over $100,000 we lost Saturday night and Sunday. And even more going forward, because we got to spend all this, look at these videos, try to identify these people are going to break into City Hall? What did they expect to do? Sit down and...
Mr. Barnes, thank, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thought you could kill this.
Yeah, sure. Does that help?
Yeah.
Who do we have up next? Or you're doing this, but...
Bridget Stack, if you could tell us your name and your location?
Yes, I'm located in Erie as well. I actually live downtown. So I just wanted to also ask, ask you all to consider that although property damage was done, I firmly believe that property damage pales in comparison to human life. And even Hannah Kirby, owner of Ember and Forge, stated herself that her property damage, yes, it was, you know, not great, but she would rather care about what the protests were about and what the messages that people were trying to send. In my experience, the pattern of violence I've seen is not through protests, but through police. I'm actually very disappointed in the way that our city handled this last weekend and the way it was reported. I really would suggest anyone who cares more about property damage and the cost of it, rather than people's life, should not be in a position of power whatsoever and should really reconsider their beliefs. I personally don't care that that woman was not visibly harmed or bleeding or broken in some way. I believe that the emotional damage that going through something like that matters as well. And honestly, the reason why we cannot restore order is because the order that existed just has not been what's working. Protests are meant to disrupt. And although outside sources or other people have really been behind a lot of it, and it's not really part of the Black Lives Matter movement or the black community that's really doing a lot of that, I have to say that we can no longer complain about how the protests are handled and how people respond to this, because they've had enough after 400 years of abuses, after 400 years of us not caring. And who are we to say how they're going to showcase that? So that's all I'd really like to say that I'd hope you all consider.
Thank you. Frank, you're...
Forty-seven ago?
Hello, thank you. So I wanted to speak to...
Excuse me. Jessica, if you could please state your name and your address, please, for the record?
Yes, of course. Thank you. My name is Jessica Ananziata, and I live downtown in Erie also. I want to speak to the claim that Hannah Silbaugh was forming a barrier. She was one small person sitting on the ground, covering her face after she had been maced. And the point of a protest is peaceful non-compliance. And so of course she wasn't complying. And the, I think it's frankly nonsensical for us to get behind the notion that she was forming a barrier to all of those police officers in their extensive protective gear. The kick was unnecessary. And while we might not see major injuries on Hannah, it's indicative of a culture of policing that leads to these tragedies that we're talking about. I feel like we can't ignore that Hannah is a young white woman. What if Hannah had been a different color? How would this have worked out differently? She wasn't preventing any police officers from doing anything. She was just existing in a space, expressing her First Amendment right to share her voice. And I am frankly very disappointed by the chief of police and the mayor's statements on this matter. There are videos from other angles. The claim that the video is potentially doctored is ridiculous. I hope that we, as a city, will stand together to do the right thing in this moment and to say that racism and systemic racism in particular has no place in our community and that we can hopefully be a model for the rest of the country and start to right many of the wrongs that exist in our city as well as in our country at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank? Oh.
Hi, my name is Ron Lichnack. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ron.
All right, I'm Ron Lichnack. I live in here as well. I'm just going to touch a little bit on Saturday because I wasn't there. The only thing I can say about Saturday is maybe attention to that would ease off if the cop was an adult and said, listen, this is my first time in this experience. I overreacted a little bit. I'm sorry. That would have went a long way. But what else I want to say is, I've been pretty heavily involved in what's been going on downtown. I'm the one that actually started the nine-minute kneel that we have in front of City Hall every day at 8:19. And what I'm disappointed in is the young adults and the kids out there. I'm not going to call them protesting because they're not protesting. They're demonstrating to America how this should be done. They're demonstrators. They're not being violent. They're not being disruptive. They're not blocking traffic. They're doing the right thing. And not one day have I seen news coverage about it. I have not seen any cops come out and say, listen, we support you in this. I haven't seen you guys come out and say, listen, we support you in this. They are leading our communities. There's a six-year-old, a nine-year-old, and an 11-year-old kid down there every day. They're trying to get their voice heard. They can't even vote yet. And their voice is being heard louder than the people that are voted into office right now. I was asked earlier, why, why I'm so vocal in this? And I was asked, because I'm white, I shouldn't be this vocal. And I didn't know my voice had a color. I don't, the people out there are demonstrating right now, that will be out there again tonight. They're young adults that are trying to do it the right way. And it's very disappointing to them that because of a few bad apples on Saturday, yes, Saturday was horrible. I get it. The last part of it was horrible. They're disappointed that what they're doing is not being seen. What they're hearing by, by them not being able to do their demonstration on Saturday and getting the demonstration on Saturday is, okay, you've been protesting out here, you've been demonstrating out here for two days without incident. We don't care about that. We don't trust you. We don't trust what's going to happen. We don't trust our community. We need to start trusting them, because they're doing it right. And I am so proud of them, young adults and kids. And the elected officials and the police and the mayor, they, they need your support, man. They need to understand that what they are saying is being heard. They don't think it's being heard, but they're still out there trying to have it heard. It would be so much, man, if, you know, I don't care about the permit, go out there and say, listen, guys, we hear you. How can we help? Like the dude in Flint, Michigan, the sheriff, that was awesome. The, the cops come out and spy on, on them, make sure they're not doing anything wrong. They're not. I sit back and park on the bench, and I watch them in amazement. I'm like, wow, my generation should have done this. We failed this generation coming up. My generation, your generation, we failed everybody. They're not going to fail. They have so much invested in this, and we need to help them. Everybody needs to help them. And I just, I just hope you guys can change your, your view. I don't know who voted the thing down for Saturday, but show them that you trust them. Show the community that you trust them. They're doing the right thing, man. They really are. They're trying to anyway. Let's show them. I'm there every day with them. And I will be until, until they say it's good enough for them. Because I failed already. My generation failed it. And I don't want these guys to fail. And I'm going to give them as much support and help as I can. And I hope that the elected officials that they're looking up to and the police, we're supposed to look up to.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. From here on out, citizens, we do have to state your name and the address in which you live, not just in Erie, not just downtown Erie. We need the exact address for the record, please. Thank you.
Did you call my name yet, Frank?
Yes, Your Honor.
Sorry. This is Breda Tepred, I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. Thank you for this opportunity. First of all, I really think, I'm tired of hearing the word riot used in conjunction with Saturday night. I think it's way overdone word to what I, I was there until, I don't know, probably about eight o'clock, but I watched a lot of it on live video, several live videos. And to me, that's not what a riot would look like. It was unrest, and we know that anybody who comes to a demonstration with rocks and rocket bombs and whatever is not part of the demonstration. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. I am concerned at the mayor's proposal to divert or to change the criteria of who is eligible for the next round of flagship funds. Part of the reason that we're seeing the demonstrations we're currently seeing is out of response to long-term systemic racism and its results. What is well-known about Erie is that Erie participated in redlining, and redlining which made it hard for people to get home loans, business loans, insurance, et cetera. I think that the flagship fund should be used for reparations to help the people who are small businesses struggling to get the kind of financial resources they need because they're in zones that it's difficult to get insurance and mortgages. I have a friend with property on Prairie Street that she was having trouble selling for that very reason. That's, and I believe the council has some oversight, at least they have to finally approve the issuance of the loan. So I would like them to consider that. I also would like, the last speaker talked about the nine, the eight, eight, nine-minute kneel at 8:19. Other people wondered, is there a curfew in this city? I was looking all over the place. I believe that there is no current curfew, but I can't tell. So it would be nice to have a place where we know exactly what the status of that is. And if for some reason people are not legally supposed to be downtown at 8:19, I'm encouraging people to join me and kneeling in a prominent place in my driveway at 8:19 every night, all over the city, as people are doing all over the world. Also, I support the idea that it's time, it's time for a citizens' review board. That has been talked about for a long time, and a lot of the soft measures that have been utilized are not doing enough. The citizens should have a review board. They should be able to investigate, just like I'm on the advisory board for the Human Relations Commission, and there is a commission. The citizens' review board should be there to investigate complaints of incidents with the police. I, I am, I am white and I have white privilege, but being Jewish and having been raised as a very young child, seeing pictures of bones in concentration camp ovens, I have just a glimmer of an idea of how it feels to grow up with that kind of deep-seated fear and knowledge that there's something about who you are that is not like. And it's not just diversity. It's not just glorifying cultures. We need for people in this city to get to know that they have those things in them, that they acknowledge those things, and that we as a culture figure out a way to address it. I basically support any of the recommendations that you may hear, Sister Anne, or any representatives from the Benedictines or Erie County United representing. I do think that there should definitely be a way for people to peacefully assemble past 8:30 because of that kneel time. And I'm not sure where I'm at, but I, am I close, Frank?
Twenty seconds, Freedom.
Breda. Okay, well, anyway, I asked the city council to use its voice and its authority to help make some of these things happen. It wasn't a riot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next citizen?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Martha Wachuku. I live at 711 Myrtle Street, apartment two. That's in downtown Erie. So I'm calling in today in response to the national events going on. I appreciate everyone's comments about what happened on Saturday and what is happening across the country regarding protesting. And I'm going to allow others to speak on that, because I think our focusing on the protesting takes away from the message that is trying to be sent out right now. The message being that black people every day, and I identify as a black person, are suffering from murder under police violence. If they're not being murdered, they're still suffering under police brutality. And this doesn't just affect black people. Police brutality is a costly problem for our nation and for our cities. This response is in, is because the police are being violent, and the violence we're seeing across the country is escalated by police forces. So I'm calling today to demand that our city officials, specifically the mayor, the chief of police, and the district attorney, denounce white supremacy. White supremacy being the system that upholds that whiteness is above all other racists, that black lives and that black people are seen as a threat on spot, that that guarantees or at least allows for their murders, and sometimes allows for them to get away with their actions. So Saturday's events were a disappointment, but this is, I heard someone called it an insurrection. I won't call it an insurrection, but it's a national movement, because I won't even go back 400 years. People are tired of seeing time and time again, black names coming across their social media, black faces coming across the news, dying at the hands of police. And this is just an issue that is on the tip of the iceberg when it comes to racial issues. I and many of my friends come time and time again to city council to expound or talk about some of the issues that are, that are affecting our community. The underfunding of our school districts, the underemployment of black and brown peoples in the community. And we talk time and time about addressing the systemic issues that affect our people. Now, we have always had the opportunity to address these issues, but right now is a time to make a great first step by getting something started around the citizens' review board. These people should not be allowed... These people should not be allowed to get away without being reviewed by the police. We're citizens, they're supposed to be protecting us. What we saw when he kicked that young woman, the police officer kicked that young woman, is totally inappropriate. And I disagree with her, someone saying that she was there protecting other protesters. I've been hearing a lot of criticism about the different ways people need to protest and she was sitting there in the street peacefully protesting. There was no reason, multiple police officers, and I think some of those other officers should be held accountable as well. Multiple police officers were macing her and one kicking her. So to close my point, I really want to make clear that we should keep this conversation away from the way people are protesting and bring it back to the fact that black people are fighting for their lives. They're fighting for their lives not to be ended at the hands of the police. And every day we're fighting for the right to, um, employment. We're fighting for fair education. We're fighting for the ability to even go to college and we all know this. So I'm tired of the conversations about break, broken windows. And I'm tired of the conversations about how to protest. I want us to have an honest conversation about what the city is going to do when it comes to addressing police brutality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have another one ready. Another citizen. Somebody else online? Mr. Leopold?
Someone needs to unmute him.
He'll have to unmute himself.
He's going to do it himself. Mr. Leopold?
Art, on the bottom of your screen is a little microphone icon. If you tap that, your audio will say connect to audio. And once you do that, you will be able to talk.
Hello, this is Art. Can you hear me? You can't, you can't hear me? Good, okay. All right, my name's Art Leopold. I'm at fifty-three forty-one Apple Grove Lane, Erie PA sixteen five oh six. I'm, uh, pleased to speak with, with you councilmen, council ladies today. Reverend Martin Luther King said, no, no, we are not satisfied. And we will not be satisfied until justice rolls down like waters and righteousness, like a mighty stream. I think we've all seen what is happening in this country to our black and brown fellow citizens from COVID and unjust criminals, justice system and more. And the federal government is mainly silent and is deferred to local officials like yourselves. The time to act is now. My heart grieves and I'm sad, but I will not be silent. I want you to remember that in Erie or anywhere, if a young lady, what happened to a white woman happened, imagine what could happen to people of color. I'm going to try to talk about some solutions and some ideas. I do support the inter-church ministries of Erie Reverend Charles Mock, president, and the statement that he's made to the mayor, the city government and the Erie community. I support the creation of a local citizens' police review board that's suggested by Erie County United, that I've been suggesting for years to police chiefs and city councils. I support the NAACP's urgent campaign, which is hashtag, we are done dying. They are requesting sweeping police reforms, mandating a zero tolerance approach and penalizing or prosecuting police officers who kill unarmed, non-violent, non-resisting individuals in an arrest. They also request policy changes for criminal justice, economic justice, healthcare, voting rights and education. I also support the actions of the local NAACP. I support the police use of force policies as presented by the organization Use Offer Project, Force Project. Police use of force policies currently lack protections against police violence. We should require officers to de-escalate situations where possible by communicating with subjects, maintaining distance and otherwise eliminating the need to use force. Do not permit officers to choke or strangle civilians. In many cases, where less lethal force can be used instead, resulting in unnecessary death or serious injury of civilians. Require officers to intervene and stop excessive force used by other officers and report these incidents immediately to supervisors. Restrict officers from shooting at moving vehicles, which is regarded as particularly dangerous and ineffective tactic. Develop a force continuum that limits the types of force and/or weapons that can be used to respond to specific types of resistance. Require officers to exhaust all other reasonable means before restoring, resorting to deadly force. Require officers to give a verbal warning when possible before shooting at civilians. And require officers to report each time they use force or threaten to use force against civilians. I'm going to post a link in the chat area so that you have access to this information. I also support the African-American concern clergy in Erie's right to peacefully walk silently to show their support for criminal justice reform and their concern for our black and brown brothers and sisters. Please remember, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an escapable network of mutual.
Mr. Leopold, your time is up, sir.
That's Martin Luther King. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen ready?
Hello, this is Allison Kaminsky, oh, good. This is Allison Kaminsky, um, four eleven Madison Avenue. What a heavy and complex time. Um, thank you, first of all, for correcting the virtual issues with citizens be heard and allowing people to speak versus just email their statements. That's a big deal. Originally, you know, I attended last session two weeks ago and originally I planned to express my disappointment in the reaction to Liz's question on, from last meeting, which was, what happens if Donald Trump visits again and the financial implications around that? She was totally brushed aside. And when she persisted and became angry, she was laughed at by her colleagues, including the council president, and told to relax, effectively embarrassing her with the goal of silencing her. The root question, to my knowledge, was never addressed and anyone viewing that meeting would hopefully agree. It was inappropriate response by council pres- president. I also today watched and heard Councilman Brzezinski verbally hope for a power failure because of the long meeting ahead. There's also a chuckle at Art for having an issue unmuting his phone. What a great privilege to be laughing right now instead of listening, but don't worry, we see you. The situation that I just described is an example of the problem with real listening in our city government and in our country. Closed ears are holding us back. How long will black voices be brushed aside? How long will they be told how to protest? In reality, the goal is to silence all protests. You can't take a knee, you can't peacefully demonstrate. And then when you become so upset that you are yelling and acting out, you're dismissed for being too angry. Should they also just relax? The problem is defined as Freda said, it's long-term systemic racist policies and behaviors. The demonstrations are just symptoms. When will leadership go out and investigate and listen to the real root causes at hand? It is only by identifying the root causes and thoughtfully creating solutions that any progress will be made. I agree that a citizens review board could be a first step in getting those voices heard and translating into what needs to be done to address the root causes and not the symptoms. In closing, I would like to express my support for a few of the following matters, um, included but not limited to placing the officer who kicked Hannah on administrative leave pending the investigation. I would support actions leading up to his resignation or dismissal. Remove the ban on protest permits. I support the list that Art had mentioned and many other residents, but most of all, please sincerely listen. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another citizen to be heard?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. My name is Sydney Zimmerman. I live at four one three West Ninth Street, Erie PA sixteen five oh two. As you can hear in my voice, I'm upset. I'm disappointed. I'm disgusted. I believe that the narrative that was put out by the mayor's office the other day is not only incorrect, but it's a slap in the face to this community. To y'all who are here before me, I wish you would have been there at the protests, even if you wouldn't have joined in to bear witness. For hours, for hours, people marched peacefully. And at times, emotions did erupt. But those peaceful protesters, they calmed the situation. They slowed things down. They stopped people from acting out too hard to ensure that the rest of us could continue to protest in peace. It was a group of people who were there who were reminding others, we are here for a greater cause. Keep your focus. But we understood where the emotions were coming from. There's a lot at stake for a lot of people. There's a lot at stake, especially for people who don't look like me as I identify as a white woman. That doesn't mean that it's any less my responsibility to stand, to speak up, to bear witness. So that being said, it is of my opinion that I believe that before the city, the mayor's office speaks on what happened the other night, because they got it wrong. But before they speak on what happened the other night, that they do a better job of investigating what happened. They got part of it right when they reminded everybody that there were instigators in the crowd who were not part of the protest. They got it right when they reminded people that those instigators were oftentimes white. They got it right when they let people know that there were people from out of town causing problems in our city, putting our people at danger and setting our people up to get attacked by their own police. So I believe it would be prudent for the city to do a more thorough investigation of what happened before they start to speak on it. And when I say investigation, I mean speak with their community members, not interrogate them with the police that just attacked them. Speaking of investiga- investigations, not only should there be an investigation into the officer that kicked Hannah Silva, as we all saw that it was unwarranted, but there should be an investigation into those that maced her and those that stood with that officer and allowed their colleague to do that to the person that they're supposed to be protecting and serving and get away with it. We understand that the police force knows who this person is, knows who the officer is and is still protecting them, will not even release their name. They should not be allowed to be on our force. They should not be allowed to be paid by the taxpayers that they attacked. So we need to ensure that the brotherhood that is protecting our community, uh, community does not just communi- uh, protect those that are hurting it. This is a systemic issue, not just a personal issue. Holding individuals accountable will help to fix the system. This includes bringing charges forward and not allowing violent perpetrators to be rehired here or elsewhere in the police force. We need to redirect our police funds, um, into trainings rather than militarizing our, uh, police force. We need to train them how to de-escalate. And we need to take some of their funds away and put it back into education and other parts of the community, especially that the black community find to be important. We need a citizens review board to ensure that these officers get held accountable. And we need to make sure that if we're going to put an emergency state into place, that everybody knows what that means and what their responsibility to, to that entails so that they are not getting arrested on spot for protesting and using their, um, constitutional rights because they were not made aware of their.
Your time is up.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Next citizen, please. Hello?
Hello?
Hello, Chris?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can we have your name and address, please?
Okay, my name is Chris Lantin. Sorry, I can't hear you guys right now, but I'll just go. My name is Chris Lantin and I live at three five one eight Oakwood Street. And I have lived in the greater Erie area for the past 11 years of my life. I attended Saturday night's peaceful protest until about eight, eight PM. And for an event that centered around police brutality, I was, I was quite surprised to see no or little actual Erie police there listening to the speakers and not, you know, not in their war gear, just listening. Like, because they are the ones that, they are the ones that needed to hear these messages the most. Um, now I was standing in the back observing social distancing rules, so perhaps I missed somebody, but cops usually stand out. Uh, and they had a whole community of concerned citizens there. No one was stopping them from listening to community, community members' concerns. Uh, nobody was stopping them from walking with us. Uh, nobody was stopping them from doing some, some desperately needed community outreach. Maybe even, I don't know, talking with some of the hundreds of people that were gathered. You know, these, these people are all very concerned about your necessity as police officers and your job performance as police officers. Maybe take some interest in that. It might foster a little goodwill. Um, I think I knew, I know where they, they were though. They were, uh, getting ready to play soldier. They were getting ready and getting dressed to enter a war zone that, uh, frankly didn't exist at that point. So I was just a little dismayed by the fact that, uh, we were, we were openly discussing, there were many speakers up there, all very passionate and all with great points. And, uh, they were nowhere to be found. Uh, a few other quick things, I'll run through these as quick as I can. Uh, the mayor said something about that viral footage being doctored in news reports. How so? Uh, what, what made him claim that? I think he owes us an explanation on that one. Um, in claiming that, he is automatically taking the side of the police and shunning the Erie citizens that need his leadership and help. So if he's going to say that the footage is doctored, um, doctoring footage is not like an easy thing to do. So what does he mean by that? Because he can't just throw that out there and then not comment on it. If officers under COVID quarantine were truly dispatched that night, uh, just a tone deaf decision by the city. Uh, next, who is the social media person who got to label it as a riot on Twitter that night? Like, who, who got to ma- who got to make that decision? Um, that individual was able to frame the event as they saw fit. And as someone else, someone else, uh, mentioned more eloquently than I can, this wasn't a riot. So let's just take that word off the plate right now. Um, what is our policy on chokeholds and strangleholds? Is that public? We, we should obviously be looking at banning them. Uh, let's be a leader and make these changes before they're forced upon us by the state. Banning these two moves is a very low bar, so let's do it. Um, and lastly, um, there is an individual on Twitter named Jordan All who has been putting together videos called, um, quote, "This is what a police state looks like." The first video got forty-eight million views on Twitter and is the subject of a New York Times article. Um, so he made a sequel and Erie made an appearance in that sequel. And that one is up to a million views already on Twitter. So. So, our Erie highlight, as you well know, where the cop that we pay the salary for kicks someone in the chest, that rests in between cops beating protesters with nightsticks and a cop car driving over protesters. So, that is the company we are keeping right now, and we should be embarrassed. And we should be putting that officer on leave immediately. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
Yes, this is Anne McCarthy. My address is 638 East 22nd Street in Erie. I coordinate Benedictines for Peace. And I wanted to share a letter, and this letter was sent last Friday before the incidents of the weekend. And it was signed by Gary Horton, president of the local chapter of the NAACP, Benedictines for Peace, Sisters of Mercy Justice Committee, Erie County United Membership and Erie Stands Up Membership. Greetings, Mayor Schumber, Chief Spinarzy, and District Attorney De Neri. On Monday, George Floyd was publicly lynched in Minneapolis, an innocent man murdered by a white police officer in broad daylight. As Minneapolis Mayor Jacob Frey described, "We watched for five whole excruciating minutes as a white officer firmly pressed his knee into the neck of an unarmed handcuffed black man as Floyd begged for mercy." Sadly, George Floyd is the latest in an unending string of unarmed black men to be killed by police. In the US, African-Americans are 2.5 times more likely to be killed by police than white people. "The brutal state-sanctioned killing of our black community offends the fundamental principles of justice, liberty, and dignity for all. It is not an accident that multiple forms of white supremacist violence are happening simultaneously right now. The intense and despicable racism of the federal response to COVID-19 is not separate from the murder of George Floyd. We've baked our racial violence into the very systems that define us: education, healthcare, housing, even our green spaces. Here in Erie, we envision a world where race does not dictate how you're treated by the police. Today, we're calling for Mayor Schumber, Chief of Police Daniel Spinarzy, Senior, and District Attorney Jack De Neri to publicly denounce white supremacy and state-sanctioned violence that results from it: police brutality without charges being filed or justice served. And we again ask for the creation of an independent citizens review board for police conduct along with more diverse city and county hiring practices which can help break down the structural racism that results in systemic incidents of excessive force by police. While we applaud the planned use of body cameras by the Erie police and independent citizens review board would give us peace of mind, our organizations would like to meet with you all to discuss the policies regarding restraint in Erie, how you will protect the rights, health, and safety of all our community, especially minorities, and share how you are making sure that this never happens in our community. Please respond no later than June 5th at 5:00 PM. We want to live in a city where justice remains possible. We look forward to your response." And I've already listed the cosigners. We do look forward to that conversation. We have been asking for, as you know, a citizens review board and also for really solving the lack of diversity in the Erie police force. We've been asking for that for decades. What we're looking for are strategic and measurable actions that would make changes in this situation. So, as I said, we look forward to the conversation. This was drafted before the events of the weekend, which only highlight the need for this. And it's important to keep the focus where it belongs, which is on the structural systemic racism that's at the root of all that's happening and of constructive, clear ways to address it. So, thank you very much for your time and thank you for having this public comment section during your city council meeting. And thank all of you for agreeing to accept this responsibility. I'm sure that you did not, none of you envisioned what you would be dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next citizen.
Hi, this is Jay Brenneman, 4118 State Street. First off, I want to thank council members Brennan, Shop, and Allen for responding to me and getting back to me on my thoughts and my questions rather quickly and in depth. And I guess in beginning, I want to point to an interview that the mayor gave to Jet TV just a day before the protest. In talking about the body cams that you're going to be voting on shortly, he said that wearing a body cam, officers will have to take a step back and think for a minute. And then that they would have, and then by doing that, they would have to take, they would make a better decision than if they just let their emotions control their actions. So, I wasn't down at the protest, but I was awake almost all night watching it happen on numerous live streams on social media. I can imagine that other leaders like yourselves were perhaps doing the same. In that, I had watched most of these events unfold. And in that, with all those, a lot of people had their cell phones out. The officers knew that there were cameras on them. They knew they were being filmed. Almost everybody has a cellphone these days, and they were all pointed at the officers. So, tell me that with the mayor's thoughts, that by wearing this body cam, that it's going to have the officers take a step back and think and control their emotions before they act irrationally or excessively. The officers already knew they were on camera, and this already happened. So, tell me, how would you react to hearing about this or seeing this on a body cam? How is that any different than numerous cell phones from five different angles that I have seen, not doctored? And that are available, I'm happy to share with you. In some of the other discussions, you know, the process of the police, the police don't have to take that kind of military-type stance on the streets. That isn't inevitable. It isn't something that is demanded of them. Three federal commissions concluded that when police escalate force, those efforts can often go wrong, and they help create the very violence that the force was meant to prevent. And researchers have been studying this, the way crowds of protesters and crowds of police behave for 50 years. And the sciences there, again, I'm happy to share that with you, but there's been New York Times articles, there have been things written about this for years, going back to you Ferguson and well before. I kind of want to go back to the, some people talk about, you know, the officers with bottles of water being thrown out and fireworks. You know, I enlisted in the army after 9/11. The first year in the army, I spent by the DMZ in South Korea. Some of my first experiences there was having to power out on camp, these tiny little camps. That was not much bigger than downtown Erie. And being surrounded by tens of thousands of Korean protesters protesting America's military presence in their country and what we were launching in Afghanistan and Iraq. And I can't describe what it's like when there are so many protesters that you could feel the reverberations of them yelling and just three, and we had to stand hand in hand around the fences to keep them from breaking it. But you know what? We weren't allowed to have weapons. We weren't allowed to strike them. And some people did break through, but we were supposed to detain them peacefully. We didn't use tear gas or anything like that. When I was in Iraq, spent two and a half years there. I know what it's like when actual mortar rounds that leave, that will crush an engine block. I've had, I've been shot at while I was outside of, outside on RPG alley. I know what it's like to have people throw bottles and rocks at you. But the one thing that the military expects is if anybody in uniform, you're supposed to have a level of training and professionalism that when you're in those situations, that you keep your cool, you be a professional, you realize that if you overreact, you're going to make things worse. And the fact that this officer, if the officer didn't have the training to understand that, that's a problem. The fact that the other officers didn't step up to do it, to stop them, is a problem. The fact that the leadership didn't see that as a problem to address is a problem. I do want to note that there's a petition with over 3,300 signatures right now. This issue has gone internationally. I'm just asking that you think about with the body cams and with the fact that these officers didn't have to behave that way. It is automatic. They shouldn't have put their boot on anybody, even if it's a seven-foot male. It doesn't matter. You don't put your boot on somebody and you don't douse somebody in pepper spray, particularly when they're just sitting there and then threaten them with a taser. Thank you. I believe my time has expired. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, phone number 722-0391. You're going to be brought into the meeting.
Hi, um, yes, that's me. My name is Laura Laritia, and I live at 3703 Melrose Avenue in Erie in the city. I guess I would just like to be heard to echo what the people of color, especially the black people in this city, have been saying this whole time. I have heard multiple people say that they have been asking for these sort of reforms for decades, which personally makes me feel like I haven't, like what we are doing has gone unheard for so long, and it makes me wonder what about this time is going to change things. I hope that the video of my friend Hannah has opened your eyes to the things that can happen in our own backyard, things that people thought would not happen here. I went to that protest on Saturday saying to my friends and to my family, "This is Erie. We don't do things like that. When we get together, we can be peaceful and we can be loud and heard without having to break things." But I saw, but I saw a lot of peaceful protests and I saw a lot of angry people, but I did not want to see anybody inciting violence. I did not want to see somebody who crossed the line. But I did see disturbing things happening from the police force that are supposed to serve our city. And that makes me nervous. Is the cop that kicked my friend, a girl who is two years younger than me that I went to McDowell with, if she, if she is not saving her white privilege to not be kicked on the ground, then what is stopping any authority, any cop in the city from killing an unarmed black man like has happened multiple times throughout our nation's history and in recent weeks? So, I guess I just want some action to be taken. I want the voices that you've heard today to be listened to, and I don't want any more excuses. I don't want to hear that the video footage of my friend being brutalized by police was doctored. I don't want to hear that we were asking for it, and I don't want to hear that property is more valuable than somebody's life. I think I'd like to yield the rest of my time to anybody of color who'd like to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laritia.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. First, I would like to say thank you for having the opportunity to come and speak. My name is Divana Paisley. I live at 1416 West 11th Street. I'm here today not only as a member of the Erie County United, but most importantly, as a compassionate leader and representative for my black and brown people. I want to take this time to honor God, my ancestors, along with George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade, and many others who were murdered at the hands of police. First, I want to say that I'm very proud of everybody who was part of the peaceful protest and those who spoke before me today. It takes strength and boldness to stand up and speak out against injustice. I've watched the mayor's press release, and I was highly disappointed. About six minutes and 24 seconds in, Mayor Schumber stated that he wanted to continue to be open, honest, transparent, and accessible with everything that he does as mayor. Those are not to be, those words are not to be taken lightly. Before you were in office, there was many issues that we had based on systemic racism. If we are a city of diverse culture and choice, that needs to be reflected in our city government. Just a couple of days ago, we witnessed an Erie police officer, who we still have no name, brutally kick Hannah Silva on the chest while she sat in protest. That reason is the reason that people are protesting. People are tired of watching police officers get away with a smack on the hand when they do wrong. That is why people are protesting. I'm here to demand the name of the officer and that he resign. It is not enough to say that you are looking into it and that there's an investigation. There have been multiple videos that show that he is, that she was brutally kicked in the chest. And so, I stand here behind the resolution of having a citizens review board. Lastly, a few times the word healing was mentioned. We can't heal from what we don't acknowledge. We can't heal if we don't listen and take action in holding those accountable. So, it's time for the city government officials to stand up and speak out against racial injustice with honesty and transparency. To the citizens of Erie, I too feel the anger, the rage, and the frustration. I want to take this time to say that the revolution starts with you. The change starts with you. This is the time to educate yourself, go within to find the strength to fight productively. We all need you. We all need one another. In the words of Audre Lorde, "Without community, there is no liberation. But community must not mean a shedding of our differences, nor the pathetic pretense that these differences do not exist." Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen.
Ms. Bodine.
Hello? She might be on mute.
Ms. Bodine, you'll have to click your, the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen to unmute yourself. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next citizen. Ms. Cranston.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Amina Cranston, and my address is, again, address confidentiality participant number 499 in Harrisburg. I do reside in the city of Erie. So, I'm a 16-year-old activist, and I've never witnessed such moral behavior exhibited by the Erie police. I'm a proud citizen of the city, and just as someone earlier said, I wanted to participate in the protest on Saturday, but because I'm quarantining, I wanted to stay home for my safety and support from behind the scenes. With, with me, I've lived here for nearly 10 years, and I've never seen, or I've never felt such fear before, like when my brother would stay out at night in his studio recording music, and he would have to walk home. And the fear that I felt that he would get killed from the police, even in Erie, because of the profiling and projecting from other people's fears and from the police is such a danger to his life and to my life and to my fellow black brothers and sisters. It's such a fear that it, I can't describe what it's like to literally walk down the street and wonder if someone's going to call the cops because you're walking in a neighborhood that is presumed to be white. With that fear and with my past experiences of, I've never had a direct experience with the police in Erie with discriminating, or with, what's it called, attacking me or anything like that. But I have had discrimination from them, where we would call them and they would go to the the person on our property that we called about. And because they were white, they would support them instead of talk to us first. This is an ongoing issue with the police. We've asked for years that there should be better- We've asked for years that there should be better. We should have better in our city. Uh, I'm very grateful that you're considering putting cameras on the police, but I think there should be more. I am supporting the option of a review board from the...or from citizens to review this, uh, any behaviors that are exhibited from the police and any...sorry, I'm losing my words just because I'm a little shaken up from all this. Um, I would like a review board. I am in support of denouncing white supremacy and discrimination, racial discrimination in our city, in the city of Erie, because it is unjust how much...how often it happens in this city. It's unjust how often this happens. We've asked for years for you guys to pay attention to the racial discrimination that goes on in this city constantly, and I think it is enough. This is a time now for you guys to review it, to understand what it is, and to make actions about it. That is, I'm going to, uh, let my time go, but I would also like the...the person to resign that...the officer that kicked, uh, Hannah, uh, Silba. I would also like that to happen for him to get...or for him to resign, but I'm going to let the rest of my time go. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Cranston. Next citizen?
Ms. Bodine, I brought you back in. If you could unmute yourself.
Oh, thank you so very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I...I'm going to, uh, I'm going to yield my time to the other speakers. I...this is my first time attending a...a city council meeting, and I...
Please, ma'am, if you could state your name and address and then...
Yes. Excuse me. My name is Alethia Bodine. I live at eleven-forty-one West Twenty-fourth Street. I've looked at that residence for twenty years now. This is my first attendance to a city council meeting. I am attending today new through, uh, this new platform. I appreciate everyone's presence. I appreciate the fact that this...the council is allowing, uh, the speakers to speak one at a time, five minutes. I am hopeful that we can come to a resolution, um, for, uh, what has happened, and I am confident that, uh, something good will come from all of this that's happened. So, um, I yield the rest of my time, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thanks for calling in. Next citizen?
Hello, good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Andrea Stelmack, and my address is two-three-one-three Haybarger Avenue. Uh, all right, so, uh, something...something that I want to speak to firstly, um, I am very disheartened at the denial of the permit for the religious leaders to gather on Saturday, and I'm especially disappointed because last night, we had a significantly larger group than anticipated that participated in a respectful nine-minute meal in...outside of the precinct. Uh, and I hope that that could be an example of what we hope to achieve on Saturday, um, this coming Saturday, but unfortunately, the permit was denied, and I am very unhappy to hear that. Um, and I don't know why. I would like a reasonable explanation. And while we're talking about reasonable explanations, I would also like, uh, to address the fact that the mayor had claimed that the live footage from Saturday night was doctored. Uh, totally unacceptable. I...I'm not sure if you're aware, but it is very difficult to doctor live footage, and that is a very spurious claim. I also would like to address Mr. Barzinski or Ed. Uh, you seem to not really be taking this to heart. I don't know. I've been watching your reactions, and I'm a little bit disappointed to see that this looks boring to you. Um, also, I would like to speak only for myself, but the hashtag "we are done dying" and the demands set forth by the NAACP and protecting everyone against police violence should be in the forefront of everyone's mind immediately. What happened...what happened on Saturday and what is happening across the nation is absolutely repulsive, and the fact that our president has basically given a...a carte blanche to behave however we want, I want to speak on that as well. Um, I'm a bartender, and at my job, people cuss me out. People are rude. It's unbelievable dealing with the public at times. However, I'm expected to practice restraint at all times, and I am absolutely enraged why the police are not held to that same standard or better. You sign up to serve and protect, and if you can't even control yourself in a stressful situation without resorting to violence, maybe an office job would be better suited to someone that cannot control their temper, um, because as stated before, if you overreact, you will escalate and possibly to the point of violence, and as we've seen across the country in the past days, that is exactly what is happening. I also would like to address Hannah Silba. That was unacceptable for the police to do that to that girl. Unacceptable. I...I'm so disgusted that you will not release the name of the police officer and the fact that he is still allowed to be on the force. Don't you think it's a little bit weird? The...I mean, uh, he...so he's still allowed on the force at this time pending investigation. Don't you think he harbors some resentment or animosity? And what happens the next time? What happens the time after that? If it goes unchecked, nothing, nothing happens, and that's unacceptable as well. Uh, I am calling immediately for a citizens review board. We need to do better. It is unacceptable that we don't even...we don't have or don't use body cams, uh, in the Erie police force. What...what's that all about? What...what are you protecting? What are you covering up? Um, you know, I would also like to discuss Chief Spinarzy was very dismissive and pandering in his public statement, um, and it was incredibly sensationalized. I would suggest maybe Chief Spinarzy consider a career change in journalism because, man, that was very riveting. We cannot rehire cops that continue to act out. We need to have some kind of system. There's no...there's no explanation, reason, or justification of why we do not. Also, we need to stop focusing on Saturday. On Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, we have...we have more hours of peaceful demonstrations than a few hours of rioting, and I also do not agree with the term "riot." People are hurt, people are angry, and people are dying to be heard. Do you understand? We're dying to be heard, and we will not continue dying.
Ma'am.
I yield my time.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen?
Andrew DeLuski?
Hello, Andrew?
Hi, um, my name's Andrew DeLuski. I live at ten-twenty-five State Street.
Hello there.
I was just calling in to, uh, listen to both sides and see what everyone had to say today. I appreciate the opportunity to talk, but I'll concede my time to the rest of the speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Hello there. We can hear you.
Excellent. Just wanted to make sure my connection was good. So my name is Andrea Versotto. I'm a citizen here in Erie, Pennsylvania. I don't want to disclose my address just because I'm not sure who's all inside of this Zoom meeting. Um, I probably won't take up the entire five minutes out there. I've got some important work to do. I'm sure some of you guys may have seen, if you guys are all active on Facebook, I recently created a group. We're up to about eleven-hundred members. It's called Erie Equal, and it's a simple message that we're all trying to convey to leaders here. Um, it's just very, very simple. I don't understand how nobody gets it. Everybody deserves equality, whether you're black, white, brown, yellow, purple, pink. I think we all know that. I mean, it's been decades and decades, and the same things keep on happening. We've got police brutality going on in every single state and every single city in our country. We've got racism going on in every single city and every single state as well. Um, it's ju...it's just a very easy thing to fix. You know what I mean? Nobody should tolerate this. It shouldn't happen. That's...I mean, that's all I really have to say. Um, I know we do have the right to protest. I do not encourage anybody to riot or to loot. That's wrong. I, uh, support my local businesses. I have a lot of family and friends that own local businesses, um, so I always promote peace as far as that goes, and I'm definitely disappointed, just like a lot of the other members said about the denial of the permit, uh, from the religious leaders, because we were all trying to get together, the religious community and just citizens in general, to show support for one another. Uh, we definitely do need a lot of change in this city, whether it's from the housing that people have, to the racism that goes on, to the police brutality, all of that. And just like Andrea said before, she's a member of my group here. We talk a lot. Um, the fact that the police here in Erie don't have body cameras, it's kind of disturbing just because, uh, those have been in place for, I think, a few years now. I'm not exactly sure on the exact time for that, but one would imagine, I mean, I always presume that they had the body cameras. This is just now being brought to my attention. Um, that's definitely highly, highly disappointing. Uh, we all pay our taxes. There's no reason why the police can't afford them if that's an issue. Um, there's definitely more than enough money in the budget. I don't know where all this money's going. That's...that's all I got to say. I mean, you guys know what needs to be changed. Um, Ed, you got to pick your head up there, man. You got to stay focused. Uh, like I said, you guys know what needs to be changed. You guys are in a position of power to change it. Uh, Jim, especially you, I thank you for sending up this Zoom call here. Uh, thank you for giving that time to speak.
Thank you. Next citizen?
Due to the large number of, uh, citizens to be heard, we will now go in alphabetical order.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, my name is Angie McKinney. Um, I live at four-eleven Waterford Street in Edinburgh, actually, but I work in Erie. Um, I'm also just kind of calling in to listen, to see how everyone else is feeling. I also feel that the mayor's response to the video, of course, uh, was completely inappropriate and kind of tone deaf. To build off of Andrea's point, um, about why are retail and food service workers being held to higher standards than the Erie Police Department, um, kind of blows my mind, and I think that obviously needs to be looked into. But, I mean, other than that, I'd like to give my time to the next caller. I'm just kind of here to listen in.
Thank you. Next caller?
Ashley?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Hello, Ashley. Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Ashley, last name is Bazell, B as in boy, U-Z-Z-E-L-L, and my address is one-two-five-seven East Thirty-Sixth Street, Erie, PA. I wanted to start by thanking everyone for giving us this opportunity to speak. I know there's a lot of us, um, so I just kind of want to get this out here. Um, in regard to everything that we've been hearing across...across the nation, across social media and within this meeting, I'm hearing a lot of passion, a lot of emotion, and a lot of drive, and...and I love hearing this. I love their voices and the messages and their displays, and I...I want to echo a lot of the points already made. Mr. Leepold and Sydney and Divana have made some incredible points, Angela. Um, and while I do want to demand accountability for our law enforcement and the mayor's response to the events of this weekend, which were unsatisfactory, to say the least, I...and I don't think that should be...that should go unheard. I want to focus on some...on some action steps, and my primary goal or question here today is just to ask you, our elected officials, how we're going to create change at the community level, and specifically, what are your evaluations of Campaign Zero and the Grassroots Law Project? These have already very clearly outlined action plans that are rooted in evidence and extensive research that are being used across the nation to address issues of police brutality and systemic racism and law enforcement specifically. So I know that this isn't a dialogue right now, but I want to pose the question of, you know, what do you think of these...these plans, and how can we extend them and apply them to our community? I understand that it's going to take a lot of research, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of structure, and a lot of gathering to make this happen, but it's something that we need to do. It's more about...it's more than just what happened this weekend, although those points are completely valid, and I also want them to be held accountable, and I want to think that officer's name should be identified, and it needs to be clear and transparent how the...the police department is responding to that. But I also just want to focus moving forward, what are we going to do? And Campaign Zero and the Grassroots Law Project have actually made it easy for us. You know, they've done all the...the legwork. These frameworks are already out there, so, you know, what do you think about them? How can we extend them? How can we apply them? And I also want to make it clear that if our elected officials are not interested, willing or able to do this work, the citizens will, and it will be strategic, it will be persistent, and it will be peaceful, and it will not be silenced. And I'll give the rest of my time to anyone else who would like to speak. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We have another citizen on the line?
Hi, uh, my name is Bianca Winward. I live at two-three-two Parade Street, um, in Erie, um, and I, like, uh, many of the other people, just kind of want to echo, um, the feelings of anger. Um, as a young adult looking out at our country today, I just see, uh, as Allison mentioned earlier, an unwillingness to, like, actively listen. That means not just listening, nodding our heads and placating people, but actually listening, learning, and using that knowledge to take action. What I feel like I saw happening in Erie on Saturday and in the past week in our country is just an unwillingness of those in power to listen to the marginalized and the discriminated against in our African-American community, which entirely has been, um, suffering from the systematic racism of our country. Um, I call along with my...along with my fellow citizens for you to listen, to step up and to work with the community, the Erie community, to address, um, the causes of inequity, um, which definitely is racism. So I will make this nice and fast, but the three points that I think you should work on are transparent investigation of the officer who kicked Hannah Silba, a formation of an independent citizens review board for police conduct, and the redirecting of Erie Police Department funding to tangible community resources, or at the least, and the addition of de-escalation and cultural humility slash diversity courses to police training. And that was nice and fast, and I'm done, and we can move on.
Thank you.
Billy T?
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm actually also just someone who's listening in to see how everything is going, and, um, I would like to, uh, give the rest of my time to somebody else.
Very good. I would ask if you wanted a name and number or a name and address for the record, please? That's right.
Brian Arrington?
Hello? You have another citizen?
Brittany. I'm not going to try...Brittany K?
Brent Burger? That one?
Could be.
I'm here. I apologize. One moment. So I guess what I have to say is just...
Please, Brittany, if you would state your name and address, please, for the record.
I apologize. Brittany Kreitzberger, five-five-three West Eighth Street.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I've seen the EPD have extreme excessive force over the past ten years, um, not just with myself, but with others, and it's extremely upsetting to see how many complaints have been pressed against them, and then they're continued to allow on the force. and then they're continued to allow on the force. Um, there has been several videos, you know, it's not just hearsay, it's, it's shown. And we continue to ignore it. Um, you know, the fact that the officers who were put in quarantine were allowed out, five officers wouldn't make a difference. Um, and two of those officers are ones that have been charged with excessive force. We allowed the community to be endangered by potentially being in contact with someone who has COVID, to allow, you know, officers who have been shown to have excess force, to put them out there. And with that, I'll give my time to someone else, but I think this is something we really need to take a look at.
Very good, thank you. We have the next citizen.
Mr. Arrington, are you on? Celiopia P.
Hello?
Hi, um, this is Madeline P., I'm CeeLo's sister-in-law. She briefly left for a moment, um, but I will talk in, in her presence, or in her absence, I guess.
Thank you.
Um, we're actually located in Milk Creek, um, and we were not there on Saturday, but we absolutely stand for, uh, police reform. And, um, I think, I was there last night at the courthouse, or at the police station, uh, kneeling, and it was very peaceful and very powerful. And, um, I think that I've stayed silent long enough, and it's time for everybody to speak up. And, uh, you know, people of color need to be represented in our community, in our government. Um, and I guess that's all I have for now. But, uh, everybody that's on this call, thank you so much. Everybody that's speaking out, thank you so much. I yield my time for everybody else.
Thank you.
Cole Shenley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, my name is Cole Shenley. I live at 615 Ohio Street in Erie, PA. And I just wanted to express my disappointment in city leadership from top to bottom over the events of the last couple days, especially what happened on Saturday. Uh, I would call on the city council and the mayor's office to renounce white supremacy. This goes, you know, what happened Saturday night was a disgrace. That young woman should never have been injured. Um, I was not the peaceful part of the protest earlier tonight, from around seven to, from six to 7:30. Uh, socially distancing with my girlfriend, off in the, in the park. We watched as the events unfolded, uh, with peaceful protesting. There's a lot of, uh, clearly angry people that, about the state of the world, state of Erie, uh, state of this country. And I really would have appreciated had leadership from the city, community leaders, been there to hear these people's pain and their struggles. That would have been wonderful. Uh, instead, it felt like we were ignored, that the people there that set this up and that were speaking out were ignored. And, you know, nobody wanted to hear what they had to say, that's very disappointing. Um, I am really angry that we have, the city has pushed this narrative that's, it's outside agitators, that it's, you know, not, you know, young people that are just angry about what's going on. I don't have proof of, uh, property destruction, but it, property destruction can be, property can be fixed. Lives can't, police brutality can't be healed easily. The trauma that that young girl has gone through, that people, that the black community in the city has gone through, needs to be addressed. The mayor has not done nearly a good enough job. His dinners and his platitudes about ending racism have to stop. Material needs have to be met by the, for the, from the city very, to the citizens of the city, especially the blacks of the city, of the black citizens of the city. I am calling on Chief Spizarney, Chief Spizarney, to release the name of that officer, for that officer to be put on administrative leave, and to have an outside investigator research this case and come to a conclusion. That officer should be fired. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. Next citizen.
Courtney. Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello.
Hi, my, my name is Courtney Neely, I live at 3518 Oakwood Street. I'm addressing the council as a person of privilege, an ally to the black community, and as a participant at Saturday's protest. As I walked and chatted with my fellow demonstrators, there was a clear lack of police presence at Perry Square and on State Street. That lack of presence was verbally noted by many of the people around me as well, so I was not the only one to see that. It wasn't until hours after the start of the protest that police began to show themselves in person. And in doing so, their first act was in violence, by tear gassing crowds of protesters that were rightfully outraged. To send a clear message to the public, that you will not be heard until the police deem that you are too angry, and at which point you need to be beaten into submission. This is an unacceptable, this is unacceptable, and the exact reason that we need sweeping police reform in Erie. Our police force is called upon to serve and protect, and that was not their goal on Saturday night. Their goal was to hide and wait for a fever pitch, for the pot to boil over, so that they could react with force to quell the protesters using militarized equipment designed simply for violence. Mayor Schember made his stance very clear on Tuesday by praising police in their actions on Saturday by supporting everything that they did throughout the day. This is why I'm calling on you for the following. I demand the name and resignation of the police officer who kicked Hannah Silbaugh, in full transparency that, for the public, into that investigation. I demand the redirection of future police department funding into tangible community resources. Resources such as de-escalation training, and community outreach, and relationship building training. And I demand the formation of an independent citizens review board for police conduct, one that is not the usual suspects, regular, regular citizens with no other board affiliations, or high-ranking business, or nonprofit officials with a term of no more than two years. Thank you, I cede the rest of my time.
Thank you. We have an next citizen up yet?
Mr. First.
Hi, this is David First, I live at 2431 East 43rd Street. The events of last week should leave everyone in our community deeply concerned. Across the country, we have seen police murder two men, George Floyd and David Atwell. We've watched as our police officers assaulted Hannah Silbaugh, a person alone, afraid, and helpless to the officer's brutality. And what have our government officials done? The mayor and chief of police have condemned the protesters, congratulated the criminal cops, ignored the acts of violence they commit against our community and our people. What a world we live in, where the people with the least power and authority are held to a higher standard of conduct than the people of highest power and authority. I shouldn't be surprised. For decades, we have known that in America, the police kill people, assault people, and escape justice. Today, I am demanding justice. Today, I demand that the council ends the system of oppression by holding law enforcement accountable for their crimes. To do this, we must institute a citizens review of all police misconduct. This safeguard is too important to be left in the hands of the very organization to be regulated. This review must be formed by the people of the community being policed. This review must have the authority to investigate police activity, discipline officers of law, and present the case to prosecution if a crime has been committed. We demand all officers of the law have their name, rank, and badge number prominently displayed, because citizens who cannot identify a criminal cop cannot get justice. Too many of our people have been dogged, profiled, and abused by the police. More policing is not what our community needs, we need programs that build and support our people and communities. We need to end funding for law enforcement that subjects people to unconstitutional violations of privacy, such as stingray surveillance systems and facial recognition. Widespread facial recognition is an incredibly flawed and invasive technology that will be used to systematically profile people of color around our community. Stingray systems, used by PAC police, are fake cell towers that automatically connect to your phone and collect any data you are transferring. We need officers of the law to be disarmed of military-grade weapons and vehicles. We need our officers to be disarmed of chemical weapons that are illegal to use in a battlefield, but somehow have made their way to Perry Square. The training and equipment we provide our officers right now assumes that everyone in our community is a threat. So why are we shocked when the officers treat everyone as a threat? Why are we shocked that when outfitted with an instrument of war, our officers act as if they are at war? We need to focus on providing our police with the right tools and right training for their job, a job of service and deference to the people of the community they protect. Our community gathered the attention of the country when Hannah was assaulted by an officer of the law. Despite demands from the public, despite seeing the video, our leaders have refused to hold the officer accountable for his actions. The publicity and leadership response to this violence has stirred our community into action. But the violence has always been there, deep-seated and ignored. We need justice for Hannah, like, we need justice for every person of color that suffered decades of murder, assault, and harassment by our police. If our government continues to shield officers from the law, there can be no justice for Hannah, no justice for people of color, no justice for any member of our community. We must hold them accountable, and we must make these changes, and we must do so as the first step towards justice for all. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. We have another citizen.
Hello?
Hello there.
Hi, uh, my name is Liz McDyer, I live at 3409 State Street in Erie. Um, and I'm a Spanish professor, part of my work is to take seriously and help students take seriously the perspectives of voices of, um, people in communities of African descent throughout the Americas, not just the US. Um, uh, and I participated in the protests while they were still, uh, before things got sticky. I left a little bit before nine, and I'm very concerned about how the protest was handled last weekend. And since then, the lack of response and transparency regarding the police officer who kicked Hannah, and the seeming retrenchment evident in the official statements I've seen and the defensiveness of police of heavy-handed response and self-protective rhetoric, instead of looking for ways to de-escalate and to focus on specific actors when there's, um, problems and need to respond to, instead of responding to the whole crowd in these situations. As a result, I demand a transparent investigation of the events prior to, during, and after Hannah Silbaugh's, um, being kicked by the Erie police officer. And, um, I want, hope this investigation includes those who also stood by and watched without responding to their colleague violence. Um, I demand the redirection of future police department funds into tangible community resources, especially, um, those advocated for by those in Erie, um, um, the communities that are so often ignored, such as, um, the black communities, people of color in general. And, um, I demand the formation of an independent citizens review board for police conduct. Uh, and thank you for the work you're doing in trying to bring these things together, and for listening today.
Thank you. Hello there.
Ms. Coley.
Hello, this is Elspeth Kelly, 1232 West 11th Street. Um, I'll start out by saying thank you, Councilwoman Allen. I saw your statement that you put out about, you know, the, uh, the abuse of power that we've seen over the years in Erie by the Erie Police Department. I've lived in Erie pretty much most of my life, so I'm aware of most of those cases that you mentioned in your statement. I've also had interactions with the EPD while peacefully protesting, and while it was extremely unpleasant, um, it could have been much more unpleasant if I was not a white person. The mayor has a lot to say, a lot to say about addressing racism, and everyone else has kind of reiterated that, but they're empty words without tangible and proactive measures. We need the body cameras, I, I'm assuming you guys will vote to institute that. We need the review board. We need the funding for the Erie Police Department to be redirected to things that are not, you know, gaining more militarized equipment. We need them to have de-escalation training, we need them to have anti-bias and cultural awareness training. We need transparency in this investigation, that's what everyone's been calling on of the officer in question. We need transparency when we're told that it's a state of emergency, or there may or may not be a curfew. Everyone needs to be very clear on what those things mean, so no one's getting in trouble, and we don't have any more problems. And I would also like to, for you all, to encourage the mayor and encourage the chief, and if you have relationships with, uh, Mr. Denary, to answer the letter that Sister Anne read earlier. I think that if we can have a meeting, and that we can have some dialogue, that we can get places, and we can have tangible results come out of this, like Cole said, dinners are great, but that doesn't get us anywhere. I know people who've been at those dinners, and they did not feel satisfied with the outcomes. Um, there's things we're doing, yes, but can we do more? Heck yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We have another citizen online? Hello? Technical difficulties? Hello there?
Hello, uh, my name is, my name is Eric Brown, I live on Town Hall Road and Summit. Uh, there are many people who have spoken before me that expressed sentiments that I share regarding the incidents of Saturday. Uh, therefore, I'll keep my talking points to the three demands of Erie County United. First, I'd like the offending officer and the EPD at large to be held accountable for their shameful conduct. Second, I'd like to see the formation of an independent citizens review board for police conduct. And, uh, lastly, and I think most importantly, I'd like to see a defunding of Erie police, who are equipped as an occupying force in one of the poorest zip codes in the country, where people sleep in the streets and many go hungry, while schools are in decay, and while Erie Insurance and its associated parties continue to gentrify our downtown. Tax funds are better spent on social workers than police training. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. Hello there?
Ms. Laska.
Hello?
Ms. Laska.
Hello, Ms. Laska.
Okay, moving on. Leanne Mira.
Ms. Narako.
Uh, yeah, hi, I am Leanna Narako, I am on, uh, 2412 Haybarger Ave. Um, I am tuning in to listen, uh, and to echo the statements of many people who have spoken before me. I think the focus should really be on, uh, police brutality. We've seen it in our own city, um, and by allowing him to stay on and not be named, you are creating a liability that he is going to do it again. And this time, probably takes someone's life. So, um, independent citizens council, incredibly important. I also agree with, uh, reallocating funds that go to arming our police officers, um, go to social workers, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Lee Williams. Mr. Williams. Moving on? Ms. Dolan? Ms. Dolan? Okay, moving on? Ms. Jensen?
Hello?
Hello, this is Maggie Jensen.
Hi there.
1343 Patterson Avenue.
Thank you.
This is my first time joining a meeting online and I would just like to echo the thoughts of my fellow citizens and I would yield the rest of my time.
Thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson? Maria Johnson? Mariah Johnson?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Mariah Johnson. I live at 1403 East 31st Street. And I would just like to agree with the rest of my fellow people of Erie. I definitely think that this police officer needs to be taken care of. By not getting his information, it definitely gives him the better chance to put another person in jeopardy and there I yield my time.
Thank you.
Ms. Lord?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can.
Awesome, okay. My name is Marjorie Lord. Is it okay if I just say that I live on the 800 block of West 9th Street in Erie? Because I don't feel comfortable putting my address on a live stream on Facebook. Okay, so there's a couple of things I want to address. First, I want to thank everyone else who has spoken because I feel like it is scary for some of us to do that. I am 29 years old. I am a white woman and I have lived in Erie for over 20 years of my life. Went to local universities. Like, I have been here for so long, you know, percentage-wise of my life. And I have never thought of Erie as a place up until semi-recently of divisiveness. And that is my privilege as a white person. I am appalled. I was at, on Saturday, I was in attendance at the peaceful protest and I left around 9:45, 10 o'clock because of the tear gas. There's a couple of things that I would like to address. First of all, I saw that this was kind of addressed, I think, by Liz in the chat about this meeting. But I did want to mention on the Facebook event for this meeting, it has different times listed, like the event time said 9:00 AM. There was another spot that said 7:00 PM and another spot that said 3:00 PM. So I know multiple people that I know were confused by that, as well as like, again, it's been addressed with the issues with signing up. So maybe that could be, you know, addressed in the future. There's three main things I want to address. First of all, there was so much confusion regarding the state of emergency. I still am not sure if we're in one or not. It wasn't addressed in a way that I feel was clear. The time length was not given that was clear. And there's been a lot of confusion regarding communication. On Sunday, a friend of mine had organized a protest and was told by the community liaison for the mayor that we had permission to protest at Perry Square between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM. And then they were met with police. I wasn't there on Sunday. However, on Saturday, what I wanted to address is, well, first of all, I want to know why they were told it was okay and then not told if that changed and then were met with police with guns because they were terrified. And then the other things that I wanted to address are the mayor and local media and like the way that the situation has been handled. I have seen the mayor and other like local news outlets echoing the mayor stating and the chief of police stating that the presence of eye washes and milk and milk of magnesium mixtures that are used to mitigate pain caused by tear gas was a sign of malicious intent by the rioters. Now, I don't know if like, if everyone is aware of this, but millennials and Generation Z, who are the, were the majority of the people making up that protest, are, we grew up on the internet and we invented something called viral posting. Now, in the last week and a half or two weeks, I have seen over a dozen protests preparedness posts that teach people how to make those things. A lot of the people who had them with, had those items with them were running around and we, including myself, were just helping other people who had been assaulted by the police officers at that time. And the most important thing that I would like to address is that it was stated by the mayor and many other people, chief of police, the news, that we were, we, the protesters on Saturday, were given many warnings by the police to disperse before they shot supposedly regular smoke and then tear gas at us. That is not true. If they did, they said it to themselves very quietly on the roof. There was no bullhorns, there was no speakers. We could not hear anything. Also, before tear gas was thrown at us, we were already, most of us, across the street in Perry Square. I did not hear any warning or anything from the police that they were going to shoot tear gas or throw tear gas canisters at us until 23 minutes after the first time they threw tear gas at us. And that is unacceptable. I was like, I am appalled. I never thought that I would have to like smell or know what it felt like to be tear gassed when all I was doing was, you know, practicing my constitutional right to free speech and my right to protest peacefully. There were a couple of people who were bad actors and it is my belief and the belief of many other people who were in attendance that those people could have easily been stopped as they were starting to deface property or whatever it was that they were doing, but there were so few of them.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am, your time is up unfortunately.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in.
Nikki Thomas?
Hello?
Hello there.
Hi, my name is Nisi Thomas. I live at 2690 Willowood Drive in Erie, Pennsylvania. I, like many of the citizens listening, agree with much of what's being said in this meeting, including firing the police officer who displayed violence on Saturday, defunding the police and creating a citizens review board. In addition, I believe that Erie should look into implementing Campaign Zero, as mentioned before. I'm personally very disgusted by the police brutality shown in Erie and many other places over the country. However, I would like to use my time to discuss something that I found very unconstitutional. The city of Erie is being very intentionally unclear about the state of emergency and alleged curfew that has been used by police to stop peaceful protesting. First, I would like to cite some of the events that, from Sunday, May 31st. There were several peaceful protesters on 26th and Peach after being harassed away from Perry Square. Several police officers in full riot gear, acting like they're G.I. Joes, very aggressive and rude, broke up the protesters. When asked why they were being broken up, the police stated that due to the state of emergency, no more than four people could gather. However, I also witnessed two people standing on a sidewalk peacefully protesting, be surrounded by several police officers and forced to leave. This is unconstitutional, there's really no other way to put it. Police continue to use the phrase "curfew" and "state of emergency" to try and break a protest if they feel like they're going late or simply do not want them. There's nowhere online to find information about the state of emergency or the curfew, including from our quote-unquote "transparent mayor." Something needs to be posted online addressing this. If these mandates do not exist right now in Erie, it needs to be made clear so that police cease using these excuses to harass citizens. If there is a curfew, it should be clear about what people's rights are and how they should conduct their protest. It's clear to me that these phrases are just being thrown around by police officers to silence people and it's a clear violation of our First Amendment rights. I personally contacted the ACLU Northwest Branch, Northwest PA Branch, about Erie's conduct of people protest and I urge anyone who has videos from Sunday or accounts of any of the claims from any day, also make a complaint through the ACLU since it's clear that our city does not care. The Erie police chief said that they do not want the peaceful protest to happen this weekend because, quote, "after what happened last weekend, we need a little break," stop quote. I don't really know how selfish he could possibly be. Yeah, you're tired, we're all tired, we've all been tired, but guess what? Being tired doesn't stop us. We're going to continue to fight, continue to protest until there's real change, until the cookie cutter bull crap responses from the leaders in our city stop. I would like to end by reminding everyone that black lives matter. Not all lives, not blue lives, black lives matter. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
S.P. Myers?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can.
My name is Spencer Myers. I live at 725 Chestnut Street. I think democratic leadership has failed when it turns its military against its own people. The obvious form of this is when the government sends in the National Guard, but there are other, more nefarious ways. Americans have been subjugated under military control. That's by turning the police into a military force. The police are not warriors, they are public servants. Their purpose is to protect and serve, not punish, harm or kill. I want police officers in my community whose main tools are a body cam, a notebook, a pen, open ears and open eyes. I want police officers that protect people over property. I want my police force to have better people, not better weapons. Because of this, I support reducing funding for SWAT and riot gear, reducing funding for large-scale surveillance systems and other militaristic equipment and instead using those resources to make our community a better place. And I ask anyone listening to support that effort. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Titus?
Hi, thank you. Tyler Titus, 840 East 40th, Erie, Pennsylvania. The list of names who've been killed through police brutality is long and their deaths result in immeasurable pain. The murders by civilians immersed in the anti-black racism woven into the structure of our American society and unconscionable, is unconscionable. The documentation, visibility and viciousness of the murder of George Floyd brings us back to when the nation failed to act after the lynching of Emmett Till, after the violent beating of Rodney King and after the murders of Freddie Gray, Trevon Martin, Tamir Rice, Philandro Castro, Michael Brown, Breonna Taylor, Michael or Michelle, and Kayla Moore, Miriam Carey, Tanisha Anderson, Maya Hill, Chanel Pickett, Rita Hester, Alberta Sparu, Shelley Frey and Sandra Bland. There are many more lives who will never be noted by the national media. The legacy of this failure is borne heavily by the black people in our nation. They include black trans women and trans men, gender expansive people, cis men and cis women. In 2019, in the US, 26 transgender or gender expansive people were violently murdered and a majority of them were black. The seriousness of ensuring equity and enduring safety cannot be overstated. Following the protests this past weekend, our political leadership in Erie acted in ways that left our black and brown community members feeling even more disconnected from our larger community and our city. There was little, if any, of acknowledgement by those in power about the pain and the anger caused by enduring racism day in and day out, generation after generation. We have witnessed the admonishing of black community members which have pushed back against the brutalization of their people. This racism is built into how we police our communities, the way we segregate our residents, the health and the economic disparities that persist. These systems and more can be dismantled to create real equity, justice and peace. As a city, Erie is once again called upon to look inward, recognize and acknowledge the work to address the racism that exists in our community. We have witnessed horrific scenes, her damaging impact that this has caused on the lives of our black and brown families and we stand here in solidarity that not enough is changing. And as a city, we must face this pain with purpose. We need to call for clarity and it is a modest ask that I make now that all of the leaders within Erie hear the voices of our black community and immediately bring their pain and suffering to the forefront of all their actions. Additionally, I was honored to become the chair of the mayor's LGBTQ advisory council with a sense of hope, commitment and pride. And it is in solidarity with our black community that I effectively resign right now from this role. I must serve our community in a way that is inclusive and accountable and I will use my voice and position to work towards abolishing systemic racism. I will work diligently with our community to create equity for all who call Erie home. Those who hold power in our city can no longer remain silent and as a white person, I cannot participate in any systems that actively ignore the urgency and respect to end anti-black racism. As our city leaders, we can set a new tone that will save lives, heal our deepest fractures and improve the quality of life for those who are most vulnerable. No one individual is responsible to carry the weight of solving all of our problems, but neither are we not responsible to do everything we can to help. And I hope going forward that our city can do better. Black and brown members of our beloved Erie community deserve so much better. We all do and in solidarity, I conceal the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor? Or Ms. Taylor? Taiwan Taylor?
Hello?
Taiwan Taylor? Okay, at this time, if we did not call on you, please raise your hand. Mr. Lyons?
John Lyons, 2711 Legion Road in Erie. Thanks for the opportunity, everyone, and for hearing your citizens' voices. There are very few in positions of power in our community and there are many who feel they have no voice, no hope and therefore they have no other options to be heard. And in America, protest is a right and protest is the language of the unheard. Racism and inequality have been issues for as long as we've been a country and they are issues in Erie. Denounce white supremacy, wouldn't that be a great baseline? Form an independent citizens review board for police conduct. I was very disappointed to hear that this has been a topic for a long time. What is the delay? Demand the resignation or charges of the police officer that kicked Anna Silbo and a thorough review of the actions of those who were an audience to this officer's actions and spend less of the budget on the police and more on social programs that can improve public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If there are any more citizens to be heard, will you please raise your hand? And as a reminder, each citizen only gets five minutes and the opportunity to speak once. I'm getting a message that there are some people having difficulty getting them, getting into the meeting and I'll concede to President Winarski or Solicitor Betz as to the best method of moving forward.
I think at this point, we'll take a five-minute recess and that'll give those other citizens a little chance to get into the meeting. If they cannot, unfortunately, we will move forward with our agenda after that. But we'll take a five-minute recess, council, and begin in five minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I can. Mal, you back with us? Are you muted, all of us?
I'm muted, everybody. We don't want Mr. Brzezinski to get fired.
On Erie. You know, I respect all these folks, man, but how can they demand that we fire them?
Well, it's not in our control, so that's one good thing we don't have to worry about.
Well, I think we have to vote it, don't we?
Whatever happens still won't trip over this court.
What do you got?
Well, I was afraid my phone might go dead.
So I'm supposed to, what do you want me to do, dive and catch it?
I'll see.
Are we back, counsel? Are you? You hear me, Ed?
Yeah. I hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Normal people, I don't need you.
Okay, are there any further citizens to be heard?
Last call, any more citizens to be heard?
They should raise their hand, yes, if they're, if they're wanting to be heard.
Well, I don't see them.
We have one, uh, President Winarski.
All righty. Hello, you're on the air.
Hello. Sorry, this is my first time ever attending one of these things, so I'm sorry if I'm, I'm new to this.
Welcome.
Hello.
Do we have your, your name and address, please?
My name is, uh, Abraham Songay. I'm, uh, I live out on West 8th in Erie. Um, this whole thing going on, it's, it's super important to me, you know, because black lives matter, um, and I don't understand how that is a political statement, how asking for equal rights between everyone across the board can be such a polarizing statement for many people. I, I see a lot of issues with this whole system, and most of them being blatant racism being accepted throughout the community, um, as well as an abuse of power among, uh, the police. People are way too giddy to be suited up in riot gear and harm the people that they've sworn to protect. Um, the changes that I want to see are the resignation of the police officer who kicked Hannah Silbo, and forgive me if I pronounced their name wrong. Um, I want to see redirection of future police department funding into tangible community resources and the formation of an independent citizens' review board for police conduct, one that is regular citizens with no board affiliations or high-ranking businesses or nonprofit officials with a term of no more than two years. I just think, at the end of the day, it's important that we take care of our community and protect the people that we promised to protect. That is all. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Do you have anybody else, Frank?
There's one more. Uh, Mr. Williams, are you here now?
I am, thank you.
Hello, Mr. Williams. We've been trying to get you all day today.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Um, my name's Lee Williams. I live at 1043 West 10th Street in Erie, Pennsylvania. And I'd basically like to just say, uh, three things. First, I appreciate your time and energy and your listening today. Uh, that's, uh, very good of you to do. Second, along with Erie County United Benedictines for Peace amongst the myriad of other local groups, I implore you, uh, to create a citizens' review board to oversee the workings of law enforcement, uh, in Erie City. Uh, it's, it's just essential that everyday people have a role, uh, in those that shepherd them, those that have authority over them. Um, it's just something that's gotta be, it's 21st century reality, um, and I hope you will take it into, uh, account and, again, forward the levers of government, um, to make, uh, the process more transparent, more, um, more equananimous for all parties involved. Secondly, I believe, uh, again, I know it's something that's been talked about in the time I've lived here. I've been an Erie resident for 15 years. Um, believe that Erie City Police Officers should reside in the city that they police. I don't think it has to happen immediately, but I think anybody that gets hired to work for the Erie City, uh, Police Department should have a year, uh, to become a city resident in some form, fashion, uh, or another. Part of the issue is so many living away from the city itself and not in the city. They're not our neighbors. They're simply our authority figures, and until they become our neighbors, they're not going to be very good authority figures, uh, ultimately either. Lastly, I'd just like to say, uh, to echo others who have said it much more eloquently than I will, uh, certainly, but, uh, my disappointment, uh, in the response from the mayor's office and the leadership, uh, thus far to, uh, the events prior, uh, to, to the action on Saturday, um, and the continuing disappointment with the responses, um, that I'm hearing coming from our officially elected and appointed, uh, leadership. Um, I hope each of you will take, uh, your abilities and, uh, to, to talk to these folks, um, to call into question the video, to, uh, in essence, hold everything at bay rather than embrace, is really growing wearisome as a citizen of the town. Um, love Erie to death. My biggest criticism of the place and space is its lack and want to sort of shine. Uh, we seem to always step back, step back, step back, and I hope in these moments, even in crisis, even in chaos, it's time to step forward, step forward, step forward, and be the bright and shining Emerald City, uh, that we ultimately can be. Um, please, implore these folks, uh, ultimately to do better. Uh, embrace the moment, engage the moment, and, uh, step forward and rise rather than step back and, uh, falter. Thank you very much for your time, for your energies. They're greatly appreciated. Uh, good luck with the rest of your day.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. President, I have no more hands up if you want to make a last call for citizens to be heard.
Last call for citizens to be heard. Last call. That'll move us on with the agenda. Rose, please. She's not muted, is she?
Okay, let me start again. Ordinances passage, council file number 16162, official ordinance number 182020, appropriating the sum of $20,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Enterprise Zone Revolving Loan Fund for utilization in the flagship Commodore Fund. And, excuse me, just one minute. Will I be able to hear the vote if I'm not plugged in?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen. The council file ordinance, bill number 16162, and now known as official file ordinance number 182020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council pass official file ordinance number 182020 finally by a seven, na zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file 16163, ordinance appropriating the sum of $247,500 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof body worn, dama appropriate. My Mr. Brzezinski, second by Mr. Winarski. The council file ordinance number 16163, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16163 by a seven, na zero, on first reading. Council file 16164, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,172,492 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and $5,000 program income for a total of $3,177,492 for the community development block grant. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen. The council file ordinance number 16164, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16164 by a seven, na zero, on first reading. Council file 16165, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $831,284 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the home projects. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen. The council file ordinance number 16165, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16165 by a seven, na zero, on first reading. Council file number 16166, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $270,000, $270,136 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solution Grant. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16166, having, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16166 by a seven, na zero, on first reading. Council file number 16167, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $41,908.26 of program income generated through the Community Development Block Grant for the CDVG projects. By Mrs. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16167, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mrs. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16167 by a seven, na zero, on first reading. Council file 16168, and ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,992 of program income generated through the home program for the home projects. By Ms. Shaw, second by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16168, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16168 by a seven, na zero, on first reading. I'll go this way.
Thank you.
That'll take more business, Mr. President.
Move back. Okay. Breaking up.
I'm so sorry I muted myself. I'm unmuted now. Okay, this is new business. By Ms. Allen, second by Ms. Shaw, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper City of Erie officials and the Erie County Tax Claim Bureau are authorized to forgive and exonerate the below listed tax lien, together with all penalties, interests, and fees that have accrued against the identified property which was acquired by the redevelopment authority of the City of Erie for purposes of mitigating blight. The address is 3232 Reed Street. The tax year is 2019, and the total taxes at face value is $287.52. Discussion?
I just wanted to let people know that Scott Henry sent us all a memo explaining the purpose of this and also, uh, reassuring me that we have done this in the past. It also has to be approved by the county and the school district.
Would you like? I would just like to, uh, reiterate, you know, council's position. Private citizens have, you know, properties that had liens and has been encumbered, and we, uh, refuse to, uh, give the low. And I understand I have to recommitment or not the low taxes in the lien. And so, uh, I don't know if in preferred treatment to the, um, redevelopment authority because, just because their authority, if we're not gonna be consistent in how we, uh, decide, uh, who gets their taxes and liens forgiven and who doesn't. That's all.
I think Rose is muted again.
Breaking up again.
My phone has become possessed, keeps muting itself. Okay, um, did everybody hear the vote? Did the vote, uh, the resolution adopted seven to zero? Um, that would spin into contracts and purchase orders?
Rose, we have a waive the rules also?
Yes, I'll get to that one. We're, I, I believe where they're gonna move the balance and then we'll do the waivers.
Do we have a second? Second.
Okay.
Yeah. Any separations on the purchase orders or contracts, council?
All right, then. Voting to waive the rules or move the balance. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. All right, and we do have a waive rules, Mr. President.
Very good.
Uh, this is, uh, this came up from Mr. Brennan. I think that because of the COVID-19, things come up rather quickly at times. So we're gonna vote to waive the rules. I believe you're all familiar with the, um, if there should have been a memo from, uh, John Tushak about the easements. Okay, then we'll vote to waive the rules. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. By Mr. Brennan and seconded by Mrs. Shaw. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials be and are hereby authorized and directed to enter into all administratively approvable temporary easement agreements submitted for the purpose of establishment of outside dining area, areas in the City of Erie right of way for local restaurants. Each application shall meet with the requirements of the Bureau of Engineering and the city solicitor. Each easement agreement shall include specifications for, but not be limited to the following boundaries, all required distance clearances, arrangement of facilities, existing and proposed infrastructure, pedestrian ADA accessibility routes, and safety assurances and vices. The term of each easement agreement shall expire October 31st, 2020. Each easement agreement shall be renewable at the discretion of the City of Erie. Each easement agreement shall be revocable within 30 days of written notice. This authorization to administratively approved temporary easement agreements expires October 31st, 2020. Each easement agreement shall require liability insurance meeting the requirements of the city solicitor. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just wanna make a, uh, just comment about that. I, I had a meeting, uh, but this past week, a Zoom meeting, uh, with engineering, planning, the solicitor, Parkings Authority and downtown partnership to discuss this temporary, uh, easement agreement. Now, you know, the restaurants will soon be allowed, um, for outdoor dining. That was the purpose, try to be kind of a, ahead of the, um, uh, ahead of the, the, uh, process in case we do have some, some restaurants or some, uh, locations downtown that want to, um, yeah, enlarge a dining area. So this would allow for an expedited process for that to happen, uh, without council approval. But again, this is a temporary situation. There's a time limit on it. So we did talk to, uh, the solicitor at Betsa to, uh, to make sure that we were, uh, you know, doing this properly. So I just wanna give, uh, my, my discussions, uh, to council on, uh, what we had planned. Thank you.
Sounds good. President?
Yes, sir.
Does this, uh, include the existing, uh, outdoor services? Will they be grandfathered or not?
Well, I believe this would be for, um, any new areas, uh, that would be requested by a business. And again, it would be up to them if any would wanna take up this opportunity. But, uh, for the existing, it would, it wouldn't affect any existing that I believe. And again, if, if anyone else on the call that is, please be contrary, uh, Mr. Betsa, you know, let, uh, let, let us know.
It, uh, it would not affect.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Witherspoon. It would not affect any existing easement. Those easements have already been obtained and granted through the city with council's approval. What this would do is allow easements for outdoor dining, uh, between now and October.
Okay, so would they next year have to, uh, come back and request? Or is this ongoing?
I, it would be ultimately up to council. I presume that the way this would work is that they would all expire in October. And then if they wish to have outdoor dining going forward beyond this short window of June to October 2020, that, that, those would come back to council for formal approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through October is what it's written as?
October 31st.
Yes. It, it was identified as a way to assist businesses that would not be able to open or operate without additional seating. And it's an attempt really to, to try to help some small restaurants and businesses survive, uh, during the, the pandemic.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I totally agree with the idea. I just, the way our weather is, uh, would they have to stop October 1st? That's why I asked if it was through October. Like, we have some pretty nice October weather.
This is through October 31st, I believe.
Is it 31st?
Correct.
Yeah, I believe it was an arbitrary date that the, the group just discussed. I mean, that could always be extended if, if, uh, if we chose to do.
What is the date, David?
I believe it's in the, um...
October 31st.
Yeah, 31st.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Who knows? If we have an Indian summer, we can extend it.
That's correct. Really what council's doing is taking it off of their agendas during, between now and October. The idea is to allow it to be expedited and approved if a restaurant wants to use outdoor dining. At any point, council can say it's gotta come back to, to council for approval. At any point, council can extend it beyond the October 31st deadline.
Very good. Thank you.
Local, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. That will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Unfortunately, uh, last meeting, uh, Mr. Witherspoon got looked over. So I'm gonna let him have two this, this week. So, Mr. Witherspoon, do you have any committee reports? Am I, am I on?
You're on.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report. You still got one. I'll be back. Ms. Allen?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have three things before I wanna respond to the citizens who spoke today. The first is that we're still continuing to get a lot of complaints from citizens about fireworks that might, um, we've talked about that at our briefings. We need to make sure that citizens know what the ordinances are. And I thank Frank Stramila for, uh, stepping up to say that there will be public service announcements featuring, I believe, a veteran, somebody with autism, uh, pet owners, and somebody with young children. We have to let people know that they are disturbing their neighbors. David Brennan will probably talk about the Historic Preservation Task Force. I attended the meeting last week and I was really impressed by, uh, not just that the city is working on, um, developing, uh, a, a variety of historic walks, but there are a lot of sources out there for bike rides and ways to get around the city and find out, uh, what we have here. I wrote a response that I posted on Facebook about Erie Stain in the Yellow Phase, the way that I think it could be approached. And basically, one of those things David Brennan took care of by, um, uh, stressing that restaurants are allowed to be in the, um, to do sidewalk dining in the yellow phase. So we have made that easier for restaurants to be able to do it. I think, I am amazed at the number of people who waited patiently to speak today. I wanna thank, um, Frank Stramila, Kathy Shaw, and Ed Betsa for helping to facilitate that. As you know, there was a huge string of emails that were exchanged back and forth to try and find the right forum. I think we learned today that voices amplify a message much beyond an email. I think we also learned that we can say it. I can say it. Black Lives Matter. I think we can also say that democracy means it's synonymous with citizen participation. I think we know that there is a call out there to form an independent citizen review board for the police. During our break, I went to, I've often talked about the library as being a source to find, you know, to provide context for the issues we're dealing with today. So I found a story from the Erie Times News from October 5th, 1995 by Bill McKinney. I posted just a screenshot of the headline, "Bagno니 Critical Police Operations." Mario Bagnohni. I'm not in the Mario Bagnohni chambers today, but three council members are sitting in those, in the chambers named after Mario Bagnohni. Mario Bagnohni was a former police officer who became an outspoken councilman. He called for a citizens review board, multi-ethnic, uh, to be formed in 1995, 25 years ago. I keep rereading the Leonard Pitts column that was in the paper yesterday, I believe, where he quoted Martin Luther King. How long are we going to have to wait? How long? I think we have our, uh, requests and orders from the citizens. We have to pursue this. And I'm pledging to work on that. I don't wanna hear that we have to study it for another year or that we have to wait for the body cams to, to go into effect. A former police officer requested this 25 years ago. We haven't acted. And, uh, I'm also gonna make a request again, as I have done several times, that we figure out if there's, if and how a fee will be enacted for, uh, political candidates to speak in Erie. I got shot down two weeks ago when I brought this up. A certain campaign still owes us $35,000. During budget deliberations, I pointed you to the City of Austin, which has, um, really extensive information on its website about various types of gatherings, um, and how, uh, there are charges for public safety. And speaking of various types of gatherings, I did post that I was, you know, extremely disappointed about the last... disappointed about the lack of a permit for peaceful gatherings. Of course, after that, I began to think, what kind of solutions can we have? I found out a story on The Atlantic from April 23rd, 2020, about Israel shows us the future of protest amid the pandemic. Demonstrations and dissent are adapting to an era of social distancing. There are demonstrations that have been set up against the prime minister in Israel, where there are Xs put on the streets so you stand six feet apart. We could do that. There's also a story under the conversation about protests in Australia and New Zealand, where people are trying to figure out how to have visible protests in the age of COVID. We can also do virtual events. I thank all the citizens who told us about different resources. I also urge city council members to look at the information we got from the Pennsylvania League of Cities, which has a lot of resources from National League of Cities about how to respond. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. The resources are there. I read the first document last night, and there's, I think, three or four more things to read. This is our moment. This is our moment to bring true racial equality to Erie, and I'm all in. Thank you.
Thank you, Metsa. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. In lieu of time, I agree with all that Liz is saying, and I too feel that we need to make a difference by holding our police accountable. However, Michael Jackson's song, "One Bad Apple Don't Spoil a Whole Bunch," I, as a daughter of a retired police officer, have lived in where we didn't have our name on the mailbox, how our name was a little bit different with initials in the telephone book, and how worried I was every time my father didn't come home exactly at the time. Because they have an oath to the community to serve, and the officers that take that oath seriously never know exactly what is going to happen to them that day, just as other jobs, yes. But they, it's like a service job in the national services, there are terrible things that happen, and they never know what to expect each and every day that they go outside of their house. Having said that, I do believe that I would love to see them living in the neighborhoods, that we need to, it's just better love. You just have a better feel, it's a better tendency. As a teacher, I believe that they are required to do what I did as a teacher. I had performance assessments. I had to make goals each and every year, and we had to be held accountable for our goals that we made. And, you know, I go on, but Liz pretty much said it best. But I also want to talk about, you know, they're bashing the elected officials. You people don't know, I mean, I don't want to say it that way because I just feel like I'm defending myself, but I'm in, we, we're in the trenches, and this is a part-time job, and where do we get a break? And yes, those officers are tired, because I saw my dad, when he had to work swing shifts, he would sometimes, okay, you work all night, but then you have to go all day too, because there's changes in that. So, and I also, last week, I also asked Paul Lichtenwater, our finance guy, this is before this all happened, and I said, "I want to invest into hiring more police officers to prevent burnout." Every job, teachers, nurses, doctors, what have you, has burnout, and the very serious issues that burnout and depression can have. And it happens, and you don't even know it, and you don't even know your limits sometimes of the stress. You know, as a teacher, you have to make sure that you keep control of your class all day long as far as keeping your calm, keeping your vision that you have for your class. And it's just unprecedented times. I don't know exactly every single peace protest that is out there, and we're in COVID. I have been helping the homeless people during this time, collecting things and moving them into some apartments. I have been trying to cheer them up with a thumbs up or a thumbs down when I walk through the neighborhood of the city. I've been trying to advocate for our homeless during this COVID crisis. And I think we just need to walk in each other's shoes and just slow ourselves down a little bit. Yes, I believe that we need to look into these things. Yes, I believe what Liz is saying. But I think that we just need to all remember that everybody is a person. And I'm getting carried away. I wanted to read about Robert Fulgham walking together, side by side, in his book, but I know I'm running out of time. I'm listening, and actually, that's why I didn't say anything right away, is because I don't turn off, and that's my problem. I'm so emotional of a person, some nights I don't sleep, some nights, you know, things get to me, and I get, and I understand that. But we're just trying to do our best, in the best way that we know how. And this is COVID. Like, I lost a homeless friend because of COVID. He doesn't understand that I can't be with him every day. So, you know, I'm sorry. These are tough times. Please understand, we are trying to do our best. We will look into things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Key?
No. But we'd like to comment on the issues from the week. First of all, I'd like to say, I'd like to thank all the people who called in and participated today. I believe that there is considerable will to work on a citizens' review of some sort. And I'm proud of all the non-ethnic people who stood up for the ethnic people. But trust me, you know, I know better than most that, you know, Black lives are questionable. And so I want to thank you for your support. And that's all that, that we're going to move forward, and we're going to continue to work on this city.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing I want to talk about is to quickly talk about the Historic Preservation Task Force. I had known previously in earlier meetings that the committee wants to schedule a study session for council. Again, I'm kind of pushing that off a little bit because of all the other items going on here. It's important, but we just need to address it at some point. But I'll work with Rose and Lori to try to get that on our calendar. And of course, the public's invited the study sessions. And then after the study session, we're going to be seeking much more public input after we sit down with council and review. Thank you so much for everyone who participated in this event today, our meeting. We need your input, and we very much appreciate your time. During this heartbreaking time for our city and country, standing together as one community is more important than ever. I believe strongly in the need for diversity and the importance of inclusion, and I firmly, I'm firmly against any form of racial injustice and hatred. I always speak up and speak out when I see it. What happened in downtown Saturday, following peaceful protest, and what has been happening across the country is a tragedy. Emotions are at all-time high, rooted in frustration of the virus, our economy, racism, and fear. But like so many others, I'm disappointed and upset with those who have turned to violence. There's no place in our community for any form of violence. In regards to the police officer, an arrestigation, I understand that officers have a very difficult and challenging job. Our police officers deserve our respect for the important work that they do to protect our community, but their job must be done in compliance with the law. When someone breaks the law, you arrest them. It is not acceptable to assault a person when they are not fighting back. You know, as many council members have said, we have a lot of work to do to address these issues. It is way past due. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Mr. Brzezinski?
I have nothing.
Ready? How about Mr. Witherspoon?
Hello.
We heard you. You're not muted. All I can say is... Excuse me?
Somebody texted in or...
I don't know if they're in a little chat room or something.
No, I can't get in!
Oh. That is my ear, dear.
I guess I, and I'll be brief, but this past weekend, all I can say is hindsight. I believe we all learned something from this past weekend with the events. Personally, personally for our city, for our city, the city hall, our administration, our police force, we have to realize, hopefully, we learned something and we don't have to experience it again. I don't know if anybody has ever, anybody even on our police force has ever been in that type of situation. It was a peaceful protest, and then it turned differently when they started attacking these walls of city halls. So then it turned into a riot magnitude. If you don't want to call it a riot, it had the magnitude of a riot. I mean, but I just want to, let's just take our time, do what's right. We had a lot of great suggestions. We heard from a lot of citizens. I've heard from a lot of people on the street, not only from Erie, from outside of Erie. We got a lot of good people in this building. We got a lot of good council people and government and the administration. I mean, this mayor has gone far beyond administrations to try to get diversity into this workforce and this police force and in this town. So give him some slack here because he, who would I ever thought that he would be having to make a press conference or have a press conference because we had that type of disturbance in our downtown? But I know everybody's anxiety is up still, but there's a lot of variables to this, not just one instance. There was probably 200 instances or better the other night. And from what I saw on social media and such, I give them all the credit in the world. With that, hang in there. We got work to do, and we will get it done, but we have to move on from this. With that, Ms. Renee? Are you with us?
I'm here. Thank you. I just, I want to start by saying that I'm glad to see so many people speak up because we agree with you, we share your outrage over the systemic racism and inequality that's been going on for so long. Black lives do matter, and there's a lot of work to be done. And, you know, the mayor ran on a platform of focusing on and promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion, fostering a community where everybody is recognized for their diverse talents, perspectives, and skills, and their cultures, and that makes our community stronger, having that diverse representation and those diverse cultures. And, you know, one of the things we realized when we came into office two and a half years ago is it takes a lot of work, and it takes a lot of time, and it's not going to happen overnight. And I don't want people to be patient, because I feel like we need to act with a sense of urgency, but we can't do it alone. We need other people to stand with us and help us with this. And, you know, we, we've just gotten started on some of the things that Mr. Winarski was talking about. We've made a little bit of progress, but we have a long way to go. And I'm kind of dismayed that Tyler stepped down because we had a, we had a plan of action that we were moving toward, and we're going to continue. We're not going to be, we're not going to be stopped by the events of this past weekend. We're only more committed. A few things that were brought up that I just want to clarify because several people asked questions. One is, you know, we are committed to conducting a very thorough investigation, and, you know, we were all shocked by the events of Saturday. The matter was turned over to Internal Affairs on Monday, and the district attorney is also going to be reviewing the case. It's one of our top priorities, and I want people to understand that. People also asked about a curfew. There is no curfew beyond the regular curfew that exists in Erie for, for those who are underage. I think it goes from, I want to say 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, but I could have that wrong. Mr. Betsa can correct me. The state emergency was put into place on Saturday night because there were people in the crowd who were exhibiting very different behavior than the peaceful protesters, and that element needed to be brought under control. That state of emergency expires today. You know, one of the other things that was brought up was that we were focusing on property over people. And I hope people understand that there are residents that live above those businesses that were being torched on Saturday night. That was the concern, that we needed to get to those people, not so much the businesses. I mean, we don't want businesses to burn down because our local residents own those businesses, and that's our livelihood, but there are people that live above those businesses. In terms of the body cameras, you could see council voted on that today. We agree about body cameras. It's something that we started working on right when we came into office. It's taken about a year to research best practices from other communities to look for funding, because it's going to cost over $1 million to outfit all of our police officers and 12 of our frontline cars with car cams. We were looking for grants, we were testing different makes and models, and we were creating a policy and a protocol to ensure that we're going to do this the right way. Two more things. In terms of the peaceful protest on Saturday, the mayor and the chief both talked to Bishop Brock yesterday, and he actually agreed to delay the event. It's not been denied. We will have it eventually. And in fact, the chief and the mayor are meeting with him and other members of the clergy on Thursday to talk about other options and different things that we can do. The concern was, you know, with 200 to 300 people that were being expected, more could show up. Saturday was supposed to be peaceful too, and we don't want those folks who are looking to create chaos to kind of take over what, take over a peaceful protest. So we're looking at other options. Something is going to happen there. And then finally, a few people brought up the quarantine officers. I just want to clarify that situation. Those officers are not confirmed COVID-19 positive. They were in quarantine just as a precaution, because they came in contact with somebody over Memorial Day weekend who confirmed positive. Based on CDC guidelines and the Erie County Department of Health, first responders do not need to quarantine when they come in contact with somebody who's positive, as long as they're wearing appropriate PPE and not... as long as they're wearing appropriate PPE and not showing symptoms. And so they were staying home as a precaution, but when things took a turn on Saturday night, they wanted to come in and help. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all you do. Attorney Betza, anything to add this afternoon?
The only thing I want to say is that, you know, there's been a lot of comments, a lot of a lot of tensions, a lot of passion. But this was a pretty awesome ability to hear from the public. And sometimes that can be painful or difficult to hear. But I think overall, this, given what we have in viral or video appearances, this is by far the most productive meeting allowing public input that I've ever seen on video. So I think Frank did a phenomenal job. That's all I have.
Frank, do you have any comments? He's hungry, okay. Well, thank you all for everybody, your patience, for all the people that tuned in. I didn't think I'd be a radio host at one time, but this is pretty cool. But thank you all, and we got work to do, and we know it. Our meeting's adjourned.